Okay, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. We're delighted to be here and I'm going to share my screen momentarily. Let me do that now. See if you guys can see it. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So.
No, we can't. No. We have not seen your screen.
We're going to ask the public, please do not be making comments from her. We have John Fisher, Ms. Terry Berry. They can help direct that so they won't be confusing. So please try to maintain and let the chairman and let the board and the staff try to keep order so they can understand what we're doing because we are having a Zoom meeting.
Do you see my screen now?
No, no.
Let me try again.
There we go.
Great. Thank you. Well, so we're delighted to be here and I am accompanied by quite a few of our consultants who are there with us and I'm sure there'll be questions directed to them as well as to us. I'm going to run through a very brief slide presentation. And then I'm going to, there's an appendix at the end which has much more detail and I can run that if you will see it. So Terry alluded to this project timeline. We've detailed the phase group. Phase one was the whole technical analysis stage which all the consultants provided their input, helped guide the market effort. There was some environmental, infrastructure, reputation, marketability and land productivity. We present to you today, to the committee of the whole tomorrow with the hope that by January 15th, we go to their, they can be a big hearing, they can adopt the plan, they move into phase three and phase three is all about the implementation, defining the zoning can help, part of that is the zoning that can help define this plan but and give you the tools to make sure that it's implemented as designed. By March, we would go to the, the zoning would be done, looking at it would be presented to you then, representation of the P C for adoption in. Now, as we alluded as well, there were RFP goals. The RFP, it was to determine and balance the highest and best economic use for the property and that had to do with enhancing the quality of life for those who live in Beulah, providing jobs, a key component of this and obviously maximizing the creation of a minimum of 1,000 high-paying jobs on the site. We needed to consider all uses compatible with the surrounding context, provide a master plan that is consistent with the county's Restore Multi-Implementation Plan, consider the county's implications to triad funds and help the county recruit their investment. Now, we also had, we spoke to the commissioners, we spoke to the community, Langston and Sherret, and lost the list of other projects, other goals. We put the attract for 1,000 high-paying jobs O L F eight because that was what helped guide this, the impetus of the entire RFP. But we were also told provide county residents with a solid rate of return and bring long-term values O L F eight in Beulah. And our proposition to you is that in order to do one, two and three, we need to do, we need to meet the goals that are listed from four to 10, you can read them, I don't necessarily need to recite them, however, they were very much in line with what the community told us they wanted. They wanted a walkable downtown and that downtown is not the scale of Pentecostal's downtown, of course, more village center for the downtown to improve the circulation and consider all the planned transportation improvements that are coming in the area and that are being done right now. They wanted a very robust open space network of trails for people and sources as well as some community amenities to be embedded here, building a place respectful of future heritage meaning of Beulah, increase community wellness in general, that has to do with making a place walkable, provide a diversity of housing for Beulah residents. It just so happens that a lot of housing that's coming into Beulah is of one type only and that's a large, single-family home. And that's fine, but this, what our proposition is to incorporate a much greater variety of housing was provided to us, the mix provided by the marketability report that Weitzman and Associates did. And lastly, the last one was us saying, somebody competing, not necessarily conflicting, but lots of goals, aside this large, certainly has, they can accommodate all these goals, but we want to give you a zoning that has flexibility to adapt to changing market needs. So that was one of our challenges. I'm going to turn it over to Travis right now who can speak a little bit about the engagement and the public engagement that we went through, we think was actually very successful.
Thank you, Marina. This was sort of a first time we undertook the completely virtual charrette process with COVID-19 obviously having some impacts in terms of travel for the team but as well as gathering for the constituents and community members. We made the decision to invest and mobilize a, an interactive platform for citizens to share their feedback online and we developed a project website that we feel actually probably exceeded the participation that we might normally get in your traditional meetings in the evenings or in the mornings when, you know, the people who can make it are those who have the job flexibility to do so. With the online platform, everything was recorded, people were able to livestream it or watch it after the fact and all of the components for interaction were captured on that online platform as well. So two, two sort of sets of data here, the top set of data is the, the interactive elements of the website module, the survey results, the interactive mapping results. We had over 5,000 total visits representing 1,800 unique users. 604 of those people actually made a comment or posted a, a survey results and you see the, the survey responses and comments there. The actual project website itself generated just under, just over 14,000 page total visits and around 4,000 unique users. In addition, we utilized Facebook and their digital advertising platform to ensure that we attracted not only the participation of the folks from the Beulah area but also people across the county.
Thank you, Travis. So the, for us, the million-dollar question was how much land do we need for 1,000 jobs? And so, once we know the demand, it's good to try and understand the types of uses and the, that we're going to go here. And so we developed a whole range of building typologies with their parking for what we understand to be commerce uses and it's everything you see under the single-use and industrial, everything from a makerspace to a warehouse to an industrial park to a commerce park to small office buildings, medical buildings, and they each have their own parking requirements and their own sort of needs. What Weitzman did is they looked at a whole range of job types that include technology, finance, call centers, engineering, law enforcement, social services, a whole range of them. And then they looked at the low, average and high employment per job type and then looked at what that requirement was on a job density per acre. And as you can see here, 72 acres at the high end can accommodate 1,000 jobs easily. And so that became sort of our starting point in terms of if we know that we can do that and that's, and we can do it in less land than that, of course. And our two frames of reference in Beulah and Iscambia more recently were of course Navy Federal that has about 10,000 jobs on 400 acres with lots of amenities and so on and so forth and aerospace engineering, of course, that's providing about 1,300 jobs on 65 acres. So we know we were right within that ballpark. So, but because the commissioner of the district really wanted us to explore one plan with absolutely no housing, we developed and we told them during the interview process actually that our intention here was to develop scenario plans and let them choose which plan they wanted. And each plan would be ranked from an objective and a sort of more subjective standpoint, that the objective be having all our consultants rank the strength of each plan from a marketability standpoint, from the infrastructure standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, from a potential to generate property taxes standpoint and from an infrastructure standpoint. We ranked it from an urban design component and we wanted to also see what the community preferred, of course. And so this is the sort of general summary of, it encapsulates the, all the technical rankings and as you can see, the market plan was the one that came out on top, followed closely by the village plan, the greenway plan and then the commerce plan. Now, I have slides that can explain each of these plans more fully and can talk to you about the modularity of the, of the block structure, but this is where I stop and ask if you have any, if you want me to continue with the presentation or if you have any other questions.
Marina, this is Mr. Brisky. I just wanted to let you know, I spoke to our technician here and he said anyone who's presenting by Zoom, if they have a headset that they could put on, it might help with the, we're getting a little bit of a wind noise feedback in, in the presentation, but if, if there are headsets available, it might help. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I will, I'll see if I have a headset.
I have a quick question in the meantime, maybe Travis. I was just curious about the virtual attendance, how that may be compared to past like the Perdido Key Master Plan because all, you know, we would have events where people came in and obviously that's not possible. I was just curious if the comparison was better or worse.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pyle. I'll let Marina and the team address the Perdido Key. I was not a part of that project. I will say the other charrette that the, many members of this team were involved in was the Downtown West Main CMPA project. We had around 300 or so individual participants over the course of that charrette meeting. Obviously, there's some give and take that you're able to do in the smaller meetings that doesn't work out the same on the virtual platform in terms of being able to huddle over the designs. But we felt not only did we exceed the participation that we, it felt like, due respect to everyone in the room, it felt like it was a broader range of people than normally show up to those sorts of meetings. So we, we feel very confident that we were able to reach a large section of the Beulah area and a sizable section of the area outside of Beulah. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, there obviously benefits to doing something virtually and there are trade-offs as well. You know, we would have liked to have been there to meet with residents, but the fact that people could participate from their own homes and log into a meeting even if it was for five minutes and not have to, you know, actually physically go to a location, I think helped drive up the participation. Also generally, we had about 75% participation from the Beulah belt through area and 25% participation from the rest of the community. And I think that probably would have been much lower had we been there sufficiently in Beulah.
This is Terry. We have a lot more presentation if you guys would like to hear that and it goes into more detail and she can move forward with our appendix section if you would, if you'd like to hear that information.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is the part in which I'll turn over some of the, the presentation to each of our consultants. I'm just going to leave it like this, if you don't mind, it's a bit, if you can see it, hopefully it's acceptable because I can see you all and it just makes it easier for me to present this way. So I spoke about, you know, trying to figure out how to allocate and distribute land uses across such a large piece of property. It, we wanted to be judicious about defining uses to it and not just use it all up because they're unavailable. There's a part of it that we knew needed to be reserved for open space, areas with wetlands or areas of forested, we felt no competing reason to intrude into those areas. But then it became an exercise of how do we distribute uses and across the site? And the first thing we did was look at the marketability report that Weitzman and Associates gave us, which was very clear about kind of housing, that type or building type, the number of office uses that could come to the site as well as the amount of retail and how that could get distributed. So the commerce plan is a deviation from the marketability plan because it has no housing and it's the only one that has no housing. The marketability is key directly to the Weitzman plan. And then there are two hybrid plans that, that played a little bit around having more commerce or slightly less residential as well. And so each designer had sort of a very different imperative that they had to meet in their plan. But as you can see, this is sort of laid out on a grid because we did come up with this modular structure that was important for us because in the event that there's a, you know, a silver bullet of another Navy Federal that can come onto the site, a smaller one, of course, we wanted to be able to accommodate it. In the event, on the other end of the spectrum, that there is no massive need for, you know, 400 or 300 acres of this to be devoted to commerce, we wanted it to be a productive land use as well for you all. So you heard me speak about the project goals. There are the, the scope of work goals which were outlined by the RFP and then the stakeholder goals. And as you can see here, they're, they're ranked quite similarly. We think that they all meet the, and from what we heard from the community, Plan One, the, the market plan, the greenway plan and the village plan all ranked high in terms of their star rating because they did meet the requirements of the community. And the commerce plan ranked slightly less simply because it doesn't have as robust a mix of use as the others do. And I'll turn it over to Peter Bezelli who will speak to you about the marketability. You know, it's probably one of our most important plans, a slide that really speaks to the, the future value of this land.
Great, Marina. Is everybody able to hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Excellent. So what we, what we did is we tried to translate this into some degree of real-time economics. This is not a land appraisal, this is not a market value of the land as it is today. This is not what a developer would come in and write one check for tomorrow for the entire site, but instead this is meant to sort of approximate what the county could realize in terms of land sale prices over a period of time by, by selling off parcels of development land pursuant to the entitled master plan to individual developers or stakeholders over a period of time. And that would take likely years to do, but what this does is it approximates sort of the total dollars over that process if the land was sold off in an orderly fashion that the county could, could potentially realize. And this is based upon our analysis of, of what land sale comparables sold for these types of uses have achieved in the county as well as some conversations that we had with local market participants, both developers and brokers dealing in development land. And what we did basically is we took an approximation of the, of the types of prices that were being achieved in the county for, for particularly larger development parcels, for multifamily housing, for single-family development, for retail shopping center space, for, you know, office and industrial space. And we applied that to each one of these plans that we've come up with by acre and, and developed a range that sort of brackets in rough numbers the total aggregate prices that might be able to be achieved over that orderly sellout of these individual parcels. And so what we've done at the top, you'll see at the page, it says a low range, mid-range and high range. That's, that's sort of bracketing the total dollars that would be involved in selling off these parcels of land. And then these are kind of weighted with the bright red colors being the most likely scenario. And we've, we've analyzed that really subjectively from a, from the standpoint of, you know, how easy is it likely to be to achieve this type of aggregate sale price? And so, for example, in the commerce plan, we're estimating a range of roughly $26 million to $45 million if that land were to be sold over time to individual developers. But at the end of the day, it's more likely that that would skew toward the low end because of the highly speculative nature related to developing industrial space and, and commerce-oriented space. And so a developer coming in to buy any one given parcel would, would likely adopt a greater risk mentality in what they would be willing to pay the county for the land. And so that's why we think it would skew toward the lower end. On some of the other scenarios, you see that they range toward the higher end and that's just because the risk profile associated with developing that mix of uses in that plan is, is perceived lower in the development community.
Thank you, Peter. And this, of course, is the, the different plan yields of the different, of each plan in terms of their mix of housing, in terms of their mix of retail, mix of office and land devoted to commerce. And so this was the amount of capacity that each plan can yield and this is what both Peter or Weitzman and Associates and Urban Three used in their assessment. And that's the methodology, I won't go into it unless you have questions. And now I'll turn it over to either Joe Minicozy or Philip from Urban Three to explain this pretty picture.
My name's Joe Minicozy. I'm with Urban Three, based in Asheville, North Carolina, and hopefully I sound okay. So what this model represents is a value per acre model. So this, think of this as a relative tax productivity in a miles per gallon kind of way. So we don't, we don't talk about cars or trucks and by saying what your vehicle gets in a miles per tank because we all know that tanks are different sizes. So one of the things that we do with the visualization is, is similar to saying miles per gallon or value per acre. So what you're seeing here in vertical dimension is the height of productivity. And now that I'm looking at this, I think we need to put a key on there so you can tell what the colors are from a, from a value range. That's our mistake, so we'll go ahead and edit that. But, but basically, you can see the site from nine mile inward, the far left one, the commerce park, it's relatively all the same land use, which is generally all office park and a couple smaller buildings. And the smaller buildings that are more dense on the site are going to pop up a little bit more. So you see that in the difference between the variability in the yellows. The gray area is the park, it's non-taxable, so it doesn't produce wealth. Once you see, step outside the site, you can see what residential produces in a large lot, single-family pattern. It's relatively a low producer from a taxable standpoint and from a planning perspective, it generally has a higher level of consumption in the wider roads, but not as much of an impact as, let's say, commercial on the roads. As you move into the second image, the market plan, this is taking all the numbers of what will the market consume and if you built it here, what will it look like from a taxable standpoint? So that's where you start to see the jump in productivity because those, those other market classes in the real estate that aren't being met right now in the higher-density office mixed use and even in the higher-density housing pops up as a, as a lower-level orange. As you move into the greenway plan, that's basically a reassembly of the same stuff on the market plan but a little bit more greenway through it that you'll see in the plan, but it's harder to see in this image. But you can see the, how, how much this all pops up from a value standpoint. And the last one is the village plan, which has more agriculture. You can see a larger gray area of, of lower producer or non-producer. And again, if a farm generally doesn't produce a lot of taxes, there's a lot of agricultural exemptions and it's of low value. So think of it this way, if you could throw a blanket of taxes across each of this, each of these models, they're essentially showing you how much volume of taxes is under each of them. So I hope that explains it.
Thank you, Joe. All right, there's the explanation for it and now, this is the urban design preference, this is the way we rank them. We, we gave criteria to each of the consultants to help guide their assessment. And so we, we ranked these plans from the idea of, well, what does it take to create a sustainable neighborhood? For us, it's a lot of, it includes essentially everything you see below, a healthy mix of uses, housing diversity in addition to a mix of uses, it has to be walkable, it has to provide a sense of community. And by sense of community, we, we were guided by what the Beulah residents movingly spoke to us about what their, their, their desire to retain a rural lifestyle, their desire to have more housing choices, their desire to not have housing subdivisions, their desire for recreational amenities embedded within the plans, their desire to, to have certain community amenities embedded in here. And so the little red buildings you see are opportunities for that, there's potential for a school, a fire station, a host of, and other community facilities that we heard along the way were needed, a childcare center, we know that's really absolutely necessary. So everybody has childcare centers, you know, located near Navy Federal and also embedded within the plan. And a balanced mix of open spaces, so not only large swaths of open preserved natural areas for passive opportunities, but a mix of small parks and larger parks and greenways that can be enhanced with trails and areas for more active recreation. So that enabled us to rank our, the four plans quite high, well, the market, greenway and village again quite high. The reason that the commerce park ranks lower from an urban design standpoint, of course, is that it has less, it has no housing and it has less, less of a sense of community, of course, even though it was designed to be a really beautiful commerce park, but even then, it's, it's lacking in that diversity that makes a sustainable neighborhood. So that, and, and you know, the fact that Navy Federal exists next door and it's a very, and is a very hefty office user has, you know, has potential for 10,000 jobs right there. We were also guided by what could help serve the needs of those employees, employees the most as well. And another huge commerce park didn't seem to be the best, the best use of the space, but we did want to draw it up so that we could really understand it and try rank it as objectively as we could. Now, for the transportation plan evaluation, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Chell, a font from Nelson Nygaard.
Thanks, Marina, and good morning, everyone. I'm Mary Chell Fon with Nelson Nygaard and I'm based in the New York office. So what you see here on the screen is how we evaluated the plans in terms of transportation. And we looked at seven parameters that is here listed for each of them. We looked at the external connectivity, which, which was ranked in terms of the number of entry exits. Was calculated with the same model and that reflects the number of trips during the PM peak hour. The internal connectivity refers to the number of internal intersections, so the, the more intersections, the more connected and dense the network is. The pedestrian and biking network was also, it's tied to the internal connectivity but also how the streets were laid out to improve the, the use of walking and biking. And that's also related to the building frontages, so how attractive it is to walk and bike related to that. We looked at the transit suitability, which was, it's mostly direct, it's related to how the buses could, could move or operate well to serve all the, the site and each of the, each of the sub-areas. And last, the natural trail, so how, how each of the plants was provided, was providing this, a good network of nature trails and how well this network was connected. So looking at all these seven parameters, we, we ranked them, so the more stars, it's better, the least stars is worse. And just, I wanted to mention that the traffic impact, so when we see one star is that it's bad, that it generates more auto vehicle trips. And the four stars, which in this case is the village plan, is the one that generates less PM auto trips because it can, sometimes we think it's the opposite. And when we do a combined ratio of that, what we found is the market plan was, had the highest, the highest transportation ranking. And the reason why it's because, so it has a lot, it has a good external connectivity, it's a very dense, it's the one with the most, most well-interconnected network, so it's really good for walking and biking and has a lot of good building frontage. While it generates more or less or quite the same number of PM peak trips that the commerce plan, the fact that it has a most, there's different uses, there's residential and there's retail and, and office space, what it makes is that the, the number of trips that are generated are in both directions, while all the number of trips that would be generated in the commerce plan would be like exiting the site. So that, in some ways, like half of the commerce park. In terms of transit, we also, so we see direct routes, so that's really suitable for transit. Following the market plan, we have the greenway plan, which it generates less trips during the PM peak hour. it generates less trips during the PMP hour. The transit is not as well-suited as with the market plan, but there's a good mix of uses which balances the number of external trips. The Village Plan, again, is, that's the one that generates less, so has the lower traffic impact. But there's some, the fact that there's no east-west connections, road connections makes it low, rank a little bit lower than the other ones. And the last is Commerce Park, which while it has a pretty good road network, it generates, it generate, is the one that generates more trips during, during the PMP hour and in one direction. So most of them would be exiting the site at the same time. We cannot see here in this plan, but if you look at other images that Marina has said, it's not really attractive for walking. There's few streets with building frontages, which is, people would be mostly walking crossing parking lots. And the next two slides, Marina, they explained the methodology, but we can go through that now.
That's right. Thank you, Mary Chell. And then I'll turn it over to Giorgio Tetteghe from GIT Consulting to explain the environmental and infrastructure ranking of these plans as well on these nine metrics.
Thank you, Marina, and good morning. I wanted to mention that all of the plans have been developed with looking into reducing infrastructure costs by implementing green engineering infrastructure and optimizing open space and built environment. Multiple strategies are implemented on project scale, block and building scales to minimize the environmental impacts. And they include best stormwater management practices, consider energy reduction strategies, solid panels, green use of geothermal energy, reducing overall energy footprint. The ranking was done by comparing environmental impacts and infrastructure costs and providing qualitative scores indicating different aspects of the relations between natural environmental impacts, pedagogical impacts and development intent. There are 10 categories that we used. Cost of infrastructure per acre, cost of infrastructure per unit, flood protection and extreme events, pedagogic impacts and water quality, open space preservation, potential wetland impacts, phasing and segregation of uses and impact on the infrastructure, topography consideration, transit considerations, and utilization of infrastructure and sustainability, the infrastructure and low, long-term maintenance. Initially, we extracted the street length of the all four plans, and that has been the, the main parameter that was used to develop the cost. Based on these 10 different ranking parameters, the market and the village, village plans rank higher, Greenway was, Greenway is second, and Commerce is lower. In terms of overall cost, the Greenway and the market were the highest cost in, around like in around 55 million to provide all the infrastructure. And the Commerce and the Village were lower, lowest. Village was the lowest, less than 40 million. These are, these are initial costs that are based on the initial planning, and more details will be needed for finalizing the costs. In terms of cost per acre, the Commerce Plan had the highest cost. In terms of cost per unit, the market and the, the market plan has the lowest cost per unit, residential units. And, and additional details will be provided as needed, and, and back to you, Marina.
Marina, you got to unmute yourself. I muted you because you were getting some feedback.
Marina, you're muted.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Yes, I presume you can. The community preferences was key to helping make sure that their voices are heard through this process as well. And after the charrette, the community ranked their plans from, from their preferences. And the one that ranked the highest was the Village Plan, followed by the Market Plan, followed by the Commerce, and then the Greenway. So that's, that's their ranking, and I think this has to factor in as well in the decision that the commissioners will make. Oops, let me. So I spoke a little bit about trying to zone this plan in such a way that there's a flexibility provided in terms of the block structure. And so as I, I'm showing you this before I show you the plans, because I really did want you to understand the strategy that, that, or the, the way in which the designers worked to lay out, lay out these plans. And so we developed a, a range of block typologies. And you can see here, they go from a low-intensity all-single-family, which is what you're used to seeing in, in Beulah, from the farmsteads to the rurals, to the suburban house, to the front-loaded homes. It's kind of where it stops. You don't have any rear-loaded product or cottages. But that's what we call low-intensity, single-family. Then there's the medium intensity, which begins to introduce the housing types that Peter's report very clearly tells us is needed in Beulah. Those are the duplexes, the townhouses, cottage courts, which is maybe a way to provide for senior housing or small housing units, and two-over-one, which is basically a townhouse over a flat. Then we begin to introduce mixed-use units, mixed-use types, which are live-worth, office with multifamily above, or retail with multifamily above. And, and they all have their densities assigned to them. They've all been, the, the parking has been factored into each of these as well. And then we have the variety of single-use commerce and industrial types that could be accommodated on the site too, because we kept hearing talk about commerce and industrial, but it's not one-size-fits-all, so we really needed to understand how much of the commerce and industrial types could fit on this site and, and what, how much land they needed, how much land they needed for parking and, and, and everything. So these, these include all the industrial and commerce types, except for the, the very large distribution centers and/or the campus types, the way you see with Navy Federal. But you could imagine that you could do that by aggregating a lot of these blocks. And, and they're, and they're all, and they're all about 500 by 500. That's the average size. So since we, we know the, we have what the marketability plan tells us can be accommodated, but we wanted to have a plan in which we could see how the blocks could change or the design of the blocks could change, given certain parameters that are established as part of the zoning. So this is an example to show the flexibility of the block that could accommodate anything from cottages to a small business park within the block. Now, we're obviously going to put standards in place such that you don't have an industrial building facing single-family. We'll have to have like-facing like to a certain degree. But because the plans were developed with this kind of block structure in place, it does provide for the flexibility needed to aggregate blocks or change up the uses within them if the need arises. So for example, it wouldn't be inconceivable for the commissioners to want to reserve a certain amount for industrial uses. But that sunsets after a certain point if those uses are not fulfilled, right? We know that the Triumph funds are available for the next five to eight years. At the most, after that, they disappear. So what do you do with that land if the, the desired type of industrial uses don't come here? It would be good to be able to retrofit it for another more productive use. And so this, this is a key plan that essentially shows what are the, what were the block types we used for that plan. And our challenge over the next few months is to really figure out a way to zone for this in a way that, that's understandable, that provides certain amount of predictability of form, but that enables for as wide a variety that can be tolerated of uses facing each other. And then I'm going to describe the different plans very briefly. This is the Commerce Plan, of course. This is the, the one plan that has no housing, but still has a mix of uses with retail and commerce and office and some recreational amenities. The pink buildings you see in front are down towards Nine Mile Road are, are where the quote-unquote, I'm calling it downtown, but your village center. You know, I call it downtown because the residents have said they want to downtown. They don't want to downtown that is urban. But they do want to downtown, which for us means a place where buildings are close to the street. They can be one and two stories tall. A place that has sidewalks, a place that has outdoor dining, a place where people can feel comfortable within their, within that space. So all of them have that, that along Nine Mile Road, give or take. You can see that there's a mix of building types included here. There's even a mix of, there's a potential for a campus plan, which is those funky-looking buildings that are about on par with where Navy Federal's buildings are. But then it's a system of blocks and grids, some blocks with buildings right up against the street, like the main spine road that comes up towards the middle. And you can see a sort of a, an anchor at the very top. There's a little bit of a retail center there as well for the future. And then the rest of the land is distributed with different building typologies that are made up of the, of the different types that we showed. As Mary Chell said, some have visible parking, some don't. But even then, the, the designers were careful to put mid-block passages within the blocks that are tree-lined to provide for a shaded path in which people can circulate. All the blocks, all the plans, I'm sorry, have significant buffers of anything from 200 to 400 acres, sorry, feet along the edge of all the, all of the properties. And there are trail systems that connect to the sidewalk systems within the, the southwestern park. And they all, as I mentioned, they all have schools embedded within them. We're imagining a school that is of a, of a more walkable character, maybe 10, 12 acres potentially, where the people who live on this site could actually walk, walk to it, assuming that there would be some residential. There's also an opportunity for a mess hall embedded within the downtown. That's that red building surrounded by the, by the pink buildings. And then a childcare center, a post office, as we mentioned, a potential fire station. You can see that they're all located in rather prominent locations. Here's a rendering of a, a park entry from Frank Reader, so that even if there is commerce along that edge, and we know there's sort of rural large lots on the north end of Frank Reader, you can see that very generous buffer. You can see the attempt to put some open space where office users could come and, you know, sit and have their lunch out in that park. You can see how there's a, there's a sort of a nice building appended to a very large warehouse building where we want to be able to have a nice facade. And you can see how parking is embedded within the blocks. And this is an example of a, of a rendering. This is at the corner of Frank Reader, looking from oh, yeah, looking from down towards the, the, the large park and Nine Mile Road. It's, it's not very dense. And the type of diagrams we did to support this. So the block intensity begins to show the rate, the, the type of blocks, as I was explaining before, the thoroughfare hierarchy in terms of what's primary, what's secondary. The primary is where we would really want to not have visible parking. The secondary would be where the more intensive industrial uses could possibly go. And then the open space network with water features and ponds, closely guided by what GIT Consulting told us was where the ponds would need to be located and what the open space network would be in this plan. Now, the market plan. The market plan is the plan that develops the site according to the results of the Markability Report. And absent community input, it's the one that is the quote-unquote highest and best use, as you saw from Peter's analysis, and would yield the highest return on your investment. This one has a mixed-use neighborhood center with a retail loop on the southern side. As you can see, it comes in off Nine Mile Road, has a road that's parallel to Nine Mile Road, and then comes back down again, along pedestrian-friendly streets with buildings up against the street and parking hidden within the block. This one has a, what it does is it, it takes the park that's on the southwest side as well and incorporates green fingers in the form of white boulevards that acts as a natural separator of the residential units. It puts the Commerce Park, a, I think it's around a 100-acre Commerce Park on the, maybe 90-acre on the eastern edge, right up against Navy Federal as well. It connects to the Navy Federal site, as we were asked to do. This one has even figured out truck route. I mean, they all have the truck routes independent of the residential routes. And you can see that it also distributes open spaces in a variety of different ways. And it distributes a, a mix of use, a mix of housing types and lot sizes within the neighborhoods as well, with every home being within a five-minute walk of a little park. It has a, this one also embeds a school around potentially an agricultural farm in here and some playing fields. And it's on the terminus up towards, on the west side, towards Beulah Road. And also has a range of envisioned sort of rural agrarian activities that could take place on the site. This one also has buffers around all of the edges and enhances the, the wetlands with some lakes in which some of these, you know, we were told there was a need for a brewery, so the brewery could be right on the lake and could really help activate the, the little village center that's there. So with some buildings on these man-made lakes, which would be quite attractive. And here's a view of the Market Plan Neighborhood Center. You can see the agrarian quality of it with the, with the barns and the, and, and the, and the buildings. You can see the mix of building types within the town center. We envision retail with multifamily or office above it. The parking is hidden, and you can see how it gradually transitions from a density of small multifamily to attached building types to single-family homes rather quickly. And this is a view from the southwest corner, looking at the site with a different mix of building types. Again, this one has a, a, a greater range of block intensities, of course, as it begins to introduce low, medium, in, single-family and multifamily housing types or attached housing types. And there's a declension from the, from the least dense on the western end to the most dense on the eastern end. And again, the greatest density along Nine Mile Road and the least density along Frank Reader to sort of reciprocate kind in kind. And the thoroughfare hierarchy is actually quite visible here as well. The, this is what Mary Chell was talking about, which is what, which ones lend themselves to a, easily to transit route, and then the secondary network, and then of course, there's the tertiary network below. But when we think about zoning this, we're going to be thinking about, well, where, if this gets parceled off, where do the developers connect streets? Where do we mandate streets be located? And this helps us figure that out. Same with the open spaces. Where, what do we need to reserve as open space irrespective of the types of plans that are developed? And where would we give discretion to the developers and builders here as to where they provide open space? Both are needed. The Greenway Plan is the one in which, this is one of two hybrid plans. And we deliberately asked the designer here to, it has a more limited mix of uses, but to grow the potential need for industry. So this one puts a significant industrial component, or let's say commerce component, on the northwest corner in anticipation of the new Beulah interchange, which eventually would be built. So you have industry wrapped along the, the north, east and southern end. It has a sort of a one-sided retail strip or retail buildings. But again, up close to the street, and they all, those retail buildings, of course, all face an open space network. And then you can see that, again, the parking is hidden. There's a range of building types. And what this one does is it creates a, a linear greenway that isolates or separates, I should say, the, the residential neighborhood from the more intensive uses along the edges by this very wide green network that goes around. There's still the potential for schools. There's actually one located, a tent that could be located either near Navy Federal or on the western end, where you can see the big red buildings tied to a Greenway. And what that does is it separates the residential into four different quadrants in which a mix of building types could be provided. And you can, as you can also see, across from the Greenway, from the residential, are building types that would be in keeping with the character, smaller, smaller building types, whether they're multifamily or small office buildings, that would be compatible with the residential that faces it, even if it's across these very wide greenways. And, and there's, there's, and you, as you can see in this plan as well, a great variety of building types from the Commerce Park plan perspectives in terms of the building types that could be accommodated here. This one also has a, a very robust mix of trails. And as you could imagine, because the greenways are all connected, it seems more obvious that there would be equestrian paths that could go through here. They all have it. It just seems more obvious in this plan. Equestrian and bike path and hiking path that can go through the site. Here's a rendering of what those, that Greenway could look like. So as you can see, there's Commerce on one end and then residential on the other. But it's, it's across a very wide Greenway that has the potential to create really wonderful opportunities for the community, whether it's little exercise machines in the Greenway, whether it's park and picnic areas that the homeowners will decide they need. There's lots of opportunities. In this case, you see anchoring it, the, the potential for either a hotel or some civic building on the, on the top-left corner of that one Greenway. And then again, a mix of housing types and office more intense uses on one side and a more private residential need. a more private residential need use on the other. And this is the view of it as well, again, from the southwest corner. And the mix of diagrams. Of course, the block intensities, we could vary it based on how much low-intensity, medium-intensity, multifamily we want, but you could imagine how that's very easily interchangeable. You see the thoroughfare network, the greenway streets are the more important ones, the secondary streets are less important. They connect within the neighborhood, but they don't connect across the site. And then the open space and environmental features. And the last one is the village plan. And the village plan is the one that is also a hybrid plan. It has less of everything. So, it's the one that has the least amount of land devoted to commerce, to the commerce park, and this one is still around 70 acres. It's the one that has the least amount of house, not what the marketability told us, but less than what the marketability told us. So, it's not a full market for capacity for either use. But what it does is, similarly to the market plan and even the greenway plan, develops this in a system of block types, and you can see how they range in intensity. And there's this big central green that could be a working farm that's reserved in the middle, or it could be a very large communal green, depending on how this plan evolves. What this one does as well is plots large rural estates buffering the park and buffering the edge of the property on the northern and the western edge. It puts the village center in a form of a sort of a main intersection, main street heading up from Nine Mile Road and one parallel to Nine Mile Road that provides for the retail and restaurants that the community said they needed and wanted, and that can be accommodated. And then a mix of different commerce types, as you work your way north, they get more intensive in terms of their typologies. The yellow, which represents the residential, are the different types of residential units that could be built in here. And of course, you see these triangular greenways that connect, that all sort of connect you back down to that main central greenway that is, you know, one of the key features of the site. And each quadrant has a large community building, whether it's a school, whether it's, you know, the fire station, the post office, they all have opportunities for that as well. And here's a view of that. You can see the really nice, rich building types so that we can really try to provide housing that is in, that is needed in the Beulah area and what could be a really nice farm or equally beautiful park. And then again, a view from the southwest corner of the site, looking up at the village. And you can see that compared to what's up on Frank Reader and being built, it's actually less dense than a lot of the housing that's going up there that's not providing open space in a way that is publicly accessible or, you know, fronted by streets that's more exciting to the people that are going to be living there. Here's the range of diagrams. You can see the primary network as well as the secondary and the open space network with the very large that acts as a buffer and the mix of block intensities that are suggested. And this is my last slide, and this is when we presented to Commissioner Burgos. He asked us three specific questions. We were pleased to see that he seemed encouraged by what he had seen, but he asked us to do three things, and we're, so this will be presented tomorrow because we can't address it quite yet today, but I'll speak a little bit about each of them. Can we provide a metric detailing the short- and long-term financial impact benefits of the county if the property were to generate 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 jobs? And so, what we did, we hustled to involve the HAF Center, and we spoke to their executive director, Nicole Gilson, who is kind enough to accommodate us, and she's doing sort of an economic impact of, or her team is looking at the economic impact of each of the plans, not only from a job perspective, the long-term benefits of what these jobs will bring in terms of business taxes and in terms of everything that what the business generates in terms of taxes, but also looking at what the housing could potentially bring in terms of temporary construction jobs, how they could bring people to work on this site immediately, and a lot of people working on the site just to get it built out, and what the housing, the impact of the housing, the economic impact of the housing as well. And she's looking at that from the housing perspective as well as from, well, what is the impact of 1,000, 2,000, or 3,000 jobs? Essentially assigned 1,000 jobs to the village plan and to the marketability plan. We assigned 2,000 to the greenway, because you can see it had more, and potentially 3,000 to the commerce park. The second question he asked was, can we provide a star rating for each plan based upon the likelihood of each plan securing a Triumph Coast Gulf, a Triumph Gulf Coast grant? And the short answer is, it's hard to do because they don't look at the, we asked them, can you rate these plans? And they essentially said no, because they don't, they don't look at how much land is used up in terms of how much commerce is there. They're looking at who is the tenant who's coming here and are they providing those high-paying jobs that are needed within the county? So, we're going to be assessing these plans in a roundabout sort of way in terms of understanding there are clawbacks if you seek to get Triumph, get them back, the commitments that needed to be made, what types of employees will come here based on the uses that surround the site. We happen to think that, to know that most want their, especially those that bring more high-paying jobs, want to be embedded in walkable communities, want to have amenities nearby, want to potentially even have housing nearby, if that's possible. We also know that, she actually mentioned to us, which is interesting, a lot of those big warehousing jobs, we could imagine that they may be automated, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now. So, let's think about trying to attract jobs here that are less, need less land than these big warehouse spaces. And in fact, S T A engineering is a good example. They're looking at and making airplane parts, and they're still on 65 acres for over 1,000 jobs. So, we're going to think about how we can rate these plans for them and at least address some of the questions they have. And the third question was asked is, would we be able to provide a fifth hybrid plan that takes input presumably from you all, as well as the commissioners and the community in terms of what would be the optimal plan? Should we take the elements that we like of each, that one plan that creates, that has the highest likelihood of creating jobs, but also creates the most long-lasting value for the community and meets the needs of the community as well in terms of what they've expressed to be their preference? And that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Terry, did you have anything to add here locally?
I don't really have anything else to add except that we were continuing to...
I can't hear anything. Maybe you're all muted.
Can you ask David? David, can you unmute yourself? That turned off all the mics. I muted, get the feedback off. Is David still back there?
The room is muted.
Ah, yeah, evidently. Tell Travis we can't hear.
There you go.
Okay.
There we go.
Great. We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Do we have questions from board members?
I have a few questions. That's all right. One, I know you mentioned that there was, I think it's on slide 23, the community breakdown of how the community voted. Do you also have a breakdown of where those 271 people that voted? Are they all from the Beulah area? Are they a mixture of everyone in Escambia County? I'm just curious what that breakdown was.
Marina, I'll take a stab at that. We can provide that, but the output wasn't the default for this. So, that is a good question. I expect we'll get it again tomorrow. So, we'll do that cross-tabulation, send it to you guys. Thank you.
As a follow-up question to that, is there any way on the surveys that the individuals who voted indicated what it was about that plan that they most liked? Was it, I just didn't know if any of that information was included.
Mr. Chairman, we did not ask those kind of qualitative questions just in the interest of time and calculating all the data. What I will say is that we had lots of participation, and as the, we do many of these surveys throughout the course of the charrette, we may have had a half dozen. And that allows us to gauge the level of interaction with the community, their participation, as well as are the concepts or the questions and conversations sort of being absorbed by the community. Part of what the charrette process does is to explain why these things are done the way they're done. But, you know, there were, we didn't capture that specific question on this survey.
But what I would add to that, Travis, is say that we did, we did ask, so in addition to the many presentations we had during the charrette, every consultant had the chance to present the technical, the results of the technical analyses beforehand. Many of them had the chance to explain, you know, what we mean by internal capture, what we mean by environmental sustainability, what we mean by sustainable neighborhoods, and to get community feedback on what they like and don't like about what's happening in Beulah right now. So, I think that probably, to each person's preferences, you know, some people are more concerned with preserving the rural character, others are more concerned with the creation of jobs on the site, and they're all going to be voting based on what their personal needs are. But we really spent the week talking through the complexity of the issues that come into building a community on a property this large.
Thank you. Back to the board members, additional questions before we go into public input?
Yeah, I have a question. I realize it's kind of an out-there question, but I'm curious as to about probabilities. Looking at the number-one goal being 1,000 high-paying jobs, does one of these plans give you a higher probability than the others? And does one of them give you a much less probability?
I may ask Peter to chime in after I do, but I would say that the trends we see around the country, so there's two answers to that. The first one is, you already have within the county industrial parks that are sitting in, industrial parks that vary in size and vary in type, that are sitting not fully occupied currently, so with various parcels that are already available, and it's in the thousands of acres. So, we don't imagine that this being developed in the form of very big warehousy industrial buildings is the highest and best use for the site. Because we do know that the residents are wanting their quote-unquote downtown here, that's one question, one point. The other point I want to make is that the, where we see employers from around the country coming to a community, they want to be embedded in a walkable downtown. They want to be in a place that provides them with community and recreational amenities. And they, and many of them have workers that would want to be able to cycle or very, very short, or walk, or have a short commute to their office. So, the market, the greenway, and the village plan provide for that equally. The commerce plan does not, because it has no housing attached to it. I'm going to let Peter add to it if he has additional comments.
Sure, only to, obviously, reinforce what Marina said, which is that the singular use of the commerce park plan doesn't make it as interesting to employers of choice because those employers want to be in the midst of a place where they're pleased and want to work. So, the other plans do a better job of that. I would say that, you know, as proposed, the greenway simply has more space dedicated to office uses, but really, again, coming back to the idea that this has been planned for flexibility and the starting point for job creation is what you're seeing here at all of these plans in gray. And all of these plans adopt a mentality that at least 1,000 jobs can fit to what's simply shown on the plan. But also, with all of these plans, the residential blocks that are shown here could be converted to commerce use very readily, and the zoning will be in place to accommodate that so that throughout the duration of building out any one of these plans, which might take 15 to 20 years, if a decade goes by and we've filled up the part of the plan that accommodates this initial 1,000-job concept, and there's still more demand, because by then the interchange would have been in, and maybe there's just simply a continued robust economic growth of the county, there's completely the ability to phase development in any one of these plans so that even between years 10, 15, and beyond, we're not touching certain development parcels that could still be used for accommodating employers of choice. But all of this comes down to how the development is phased and orchestrated. But all of this flexibility is a real positive in terms of achieving significantly greater job creation than the 1,000-job minimum while also accommodating these other uses.
Thank you, Peter. Joe, did you want to add something?
Just real simple. I mean, I'll second everything that Peter's just said, and I'll just paraphrase it a little bit. From an architectural standpoint, if you think of the Navy Federal site, that's a building typology. And the way that it's designed on the site, it takes up a lot of land, and you don't get any other opportunity to phase other things but for, I think, one other parcel that can have another large building on it. With the work that I've seen that this team has done, is they've thought about it iteratively so you're not stuck with that risk of one type of building taking down too much opportunity so that these designs are inherently more flexible and more fine-grained and more adaptable is what Peter's mentioned.
I'm also curious about the density related, or the diversity related to the residential housing.
We may be muted again.
Beg your pardon. As, I'm curious...
We can't hear you if you're talking, John or Terry. There we go.
Okay. I'm curious as to, when you define, when you say there's not a lot of diversity, when I look up and down Nine Mile Road, and I, you know, I know this from my past history, that there were a ton of multifamily apartment complex-type starts out in the community. So, I wonder what you defined as the diversity, the lack of diversity, and what you were talking about putting on the site to get to that point, how that matches up with what I know from my previous history.
Okay. The, so the multifamily we have seen in Beulah is not the multifamily that's being provided, suggested here. So, the multifamily we see in Beulah is surrounded by a sea of parking in all directions and is not, you know, is not within walking distance of any amenity, right? And so, it's just, you often want to see multifamily embedded in a walkable environment in which they can step out of their smaller unit and, you know, walk to a restaurant, walk to a coffee shop, walk to their jobs, walk to transit. That's, but that's, when I speak of housing diversity, that's just one kind of housing diversity. What the marketability plan has told us is needed is townhouses, duplexes, two-over-ones, cottage courts, all the kinds of housing that you don't see in Beulah right now. What we saw preponderance of, and we analyzed this ad nauseam in our preliminary report, is detached single-family homes and multifamily, and essentially nothing in between. But there is a need for that in between, and that's what the marketability study told us was needed, and that's what we're trying to accommodate the site.
Thank you. Walker, did you, excuse me, did you have some other questions?
Yeah, you know, when I look at this, and we're talking 10, 15, 20 years down the line before this is really maybe even complete, that triggers me to think of who might be living there, and we're looking to bring 1,000 high-paying jobs, most likely to folks that have got some sort of post or some, you know, education once they've graduated high school. And when I think of 20-year-olds today or 15-year-olds today that, who were essentially targeting with a project like this, and they go off to college, they are looking at communities they want to move back to, they're going to pick somewhere that they think is, in their mind, cool or a fun neighborhood to live in, that they can walk or bike to work, they can step out of their house, they've got friends or family that live down the road that they can easily get to dinner or go see a movie, have their kids be able to walk to school safely. And so, you know, that's kind of where my mind is when I'm looking at all of these. at all of these. And then, and I guess to that point, if, if y'all could talk a little bit about how on the transportation and the traffic impact of this, because I know that's a huge concern for folks in Beulah, because they're, they're dealing with a lot of traffic as it is already, and will continue to. But how is, and can you maybe walk us through of how the most intense plan is actually the best for transportation? And I think that's on slide 17. And just kind of walk us through how, how that kind of comes to be.
Marina, do you want me to answer this one?
Yeah, go, go, yes, if you can answer from a transportation standpoint, and I will, I will say something on the tail end of it. Thank you.
Okay, well, what, what I said, that's true, that, in terms of numbers, so if we go back to the, the parameter of looking at the number of PM peak auto trips, the market plan and the Commerce Park are, are pretty close, right? So Commerce Park is still a bit higher than the other one. And, and that has to do with, with the mix of uses, but also how the network is laid out, right? So the market plan has a higher internal capture rate and a higher capture from walking, biking, and transit. But if we look, so let's say if you have the same numbers of PM peak auto trips, and here we're looking at the combined egress and access and egress, but on one, one of them, all of them would be trips that would be in the afternoon, that would be generate, they would be egressing the site. In the market plan, because those streets would be from residential and commerce, you would have, they would be more balanced. So that would be egress and access, so in both directions, which this is, this makes a lot of difference when you're, you need to design the road for that capacity, right? So that's a really, that's an important point. And I leave it here, I don't know if I responded to the question, or if you have one more explanation.
I, I would just like to add one thing before we, because it was a very good question, a very good comment first, and, and a good question. When we begin to see the, oh, considered now, nine months in, the long-term impacts of COVID, we know a couple of things. We know that there's going to be more people than there was before, either working from home permanently, or working from home more often than they did. And so what we're hearing from all our consultants around the country is that quality of life is what's going to matter a lot, and is what's going to keep communities economically competitive. And so to the gentleman that just spoke about what he thinks people are going to be needing 15 years out is, is exactly right. And I'll, I'll give you the one analogy, or the one story I read, and I told Commissioner Burgosch about this, was that there was an article that was published last week from northwest Arkansas, which is where Walmart is anchored, Bentonville, I think it was, that basically is offering remote workers to come live in their community, and they're going, they're, they're offering $10,000 and a bike for each person who wants to move to that community. And I think we're going to see a lot more communities wanting to attract employers with this idea of a high quality of life, which means that they can walk, they can bike, they can, they can be outside of their home and not have to get into their car for every single daily need. We're not saying people should have cars, they should, they will for the foreseeable future, but if they could take two or three of those car trips by foot or by bike, it will greatly enhance their, their, their living arrangement. And the National Association of Realtors tell us that more than 50% now want to be in, 50% of citizens around the country want to be in walkable environments. So this is an attempt to, to provide for that in terms of what we're doing.
Marina, I had a follow-up question on this. You mentioned that the Beulah area is basically limited right now to these drivable neighborhoods and the multifamily. And it appears the Village Plan, other than the downtown area, and of course the Commerce area, it appears to be very similar to a lot of the existing subdivisions that we see in the area, where it doesn't seem to give as much walkability as a couple of the other plans, the market and the Greenway Plan, as far as creating more of that downtown feel or community feel. Could you speak to that? Is this Village Plan closer to what we would think of as a typical subdivision in the area?
No. It's a good question, but the, the short answer is no, because you, you, you've gotten a lot of housing subdivisions that are not connected to, they're, they're just disconnected. They provide one way in, one way out, and they don't necessarily, it's becoming a very dendritic system, in which they're not providing connections to their greater surroundings. That's number one. And very often, if they have amenities, those amenities are for the residents of the, of that community, not for anybody else. So those housing subdivisions in and of themselves are not contributing back to what we have heard Beulah residents tell us that they appreciate about their own community. This is very different. So even if it looks like it's a, it's, it's on a, it's on a system of walkable streets, which means that more often than not, the housing is not front loaded, that there are alleys that are provided, it means that there's a natural mix of uses. It's not just the fragile type of housing where, in which you're seeing a lot of neighborhoods in which it's only one type of lot, one type of housing that's going in. So if the market were to need to adjust itself, those places remain very fragile or very susceptible to a market upturns or downturns. This is really intended to, so even though you see a lot of yellow in these drawings, if you look more carefully, and as the plan gets, the plan further develops in Phase Three, you will see a much greater range of types, but you will see them in, in what we call, and we're going to zone this, for what we call pedestrian friendly streets, which means that the, the way the buildings address the street is very important. The way that the, the streets are designed is, has to be conducive to people feeling safe on them. So I would, I would say that all of the plans have that, including the Greenway Plan. What this plan is showing is essentially what we would imagine a main, what you know, what we know to be traditional main streets. So, you know, and everybody has said to me, don't use Pensacola as an example, but I'm going to use Pensacola as an example, only in one very basic concept, which is, if you look at Palo Fox, it has, even if it's one, if, imagine this is a one-story structure, not a five and over, or three and over. Buildings are close to the street, you don't see the parking, and so it's an inviting space. That's what this main street is intended to replicate, just those small buildings, small increments of buildings that can be phased in over time, that are up against the street, along wide sidewalks, where, where residents are going to feel comfortable walking.
Thank you. Tim, you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick, and I wanted to, Marina, you may recall that in the Perdido Master Plan, I had a, at the very tail end of this, I had a concern about it. I'm, I'm encouraged with this, because similar to Seaside, you have a blank slate to play with. So that's good. And I doubt that there'll be a whole lot of need for marketing for the residential construction in, in any regard, whether it be the single family, multifamily. I think the need's there. You mentioned the Association of Realtors, and the demand is there. But what I'm concerned about is, is there potentially a transition or plan of transition? And it may be the fact that Travis is here and lives here, for DPZ to make the pretty pictures turn into reality. Because I think this is the easy, this is the great part. Everybody enjoys the charrettes. We love looking at the pictures, we can picture it there. And then people, for instance, in Perdido Key, were waiting for the financial golden goose man to come and, and make all our dreams come true. And then people are frustrated because it doesn't occur. I, I'm not sure, you know, and I think that the reason I asked for this particular site is that with the, the business aspect, that's the key to the Triumph Funds and all the other secret money that's locked away, feel like Britney Spears who can't get her own money, but that's really what it, it kind of seems like. You have to play by these rules to enable to unlock the doors for those. And it's so related to that, that I just wonder if there's a way for us to transition with the county, how do we make this turn into reality? Is my first question. The second one, real quick, I'd be remiss not to ask it, and it may be very obvious, but to what level, I see that most of the plans have the green area in the same place. Did you guys go to the extent of soil studies? And, and I see, you know, obviously if wetlands are wetlands, that's where you put certain, you know, conservation areas, but to what degree? I doubt that that site is very difficult or complex, not like you're into a lot of, you know, rock, or, but if, are there suitable soils, is this a, this, are these plans really realistic? Can you, can you build this in this location? I don't know if that was under your purview, but I'm just curious, again, trying to make the transition from pretty pictures to reality.
Maybe Peter can take the, the market question, and then you can speak to some of the environmental.
Well, but I, I want to say one thing first, and then I'm going to ask Peter and Georgia to speak, because those are two good questions. But the first one, to your, to the, to the notion of an implementable plan, like, how do you move from beautiful picture to, to reality? That has to do, that's what the Phase Three is going to be about, which is really putting in the, the mechanisms and plates to enable these plan, this planning to happen from, from a zoning perspective, from a economic development perspective, from a transportation perspective, what are additional plan improvements that are expected? What are the plan improvements we cannot count on for the foreseeable future, because they're too far down the line? So that's going to be, and including, for example, the environmental assessment of the site. So Georgia will speak to the soil, the particulars of the soil, because I don't know. However, what I can tell you is, he has done an, an environmental preliminary analysis of the site, and that's why the, the layouts are the way they are. That's why the, the southwest portion of the site is undeveloped. He's been very clear as to where the pumps need to be provided. So they are layered, there's already a lot of technical analysis that's layered into these plans, making them more realistic. As we move through the process, they'll just get more and more technical. And then I'm going to turn it over to Peter and then Georgia.
It's really an excellent question, because at the end of the day, that's what we're really concerned about, is how do we, you know, it doesn't, the planning exercise doesn't matter much unless it actually gets built, or something that is adapted over time, given the flexibility that's built into the plan. So, you know, I put on my hat as a development advisor, advising, you know, capital providers and developers that might be looking at this. And so, you know, part of the objective, I think, that we all have is, is, is giving you all a perspective on, the commissioner's a perspective, on what's, what's realistic. And so I think that's where concepts like, you know, the, the nature of density, that it's built into the site, the other site features that sort of set the stage for how developers and investors would look at. Partnering with the county on developing some or all of this, or just simply acquiring parcels, you know, all of these plans have been derived for their respective mix of uses, to sort of set the stage for the best success that can be achieved, so that, you know, the idea of incorporating all of the recreational trails, the, the green spaces, the retail, in fact, being loaded on the street the way that it is, not just fronting Nine Mile Road, which is a loser, actually bringing it into the site to create more value for the county taxpayers in the site itself. All of that's done to really maximize the chances that all of the stakeholders are going to be able to see a realistic development built here that's financially feasible, that's financeable, provides some degree of a significant return to the taxpayers, and that the whole planning exercise has basically merchandised this entire parcel to be able to be sold off to developers, or, or, you know, prosecuted by the county, so that this has the greatest likelihood of success. So we're really mindful of exactly that principle he raised, and all of these plans incorporate that thinking, even the Commerce Plan. I think it, you know, the Commerce Plan were to be adopted, it would be the most beautiful, you know, Commerce Park in, you know, in a couple of states away. So I think we've really, we've really thought very carefully about them.
Georgia, do you want to address the soil issues?
Yes, I would like to add that the preliminary investigation of the data, environmental data of the site show that this site has a favorable, in addition, I wanted to add that the, the site has high, so it's above 550 per flood elevation, which is favorable, and we expect to be investigated in previous studies in terms of contamination, and it's a very clean site, so you don't have to do any interpretation. And also, the soils are typical for not polluted, so nothing, nothing is expected that to create any issues in the building. The sub-surface acquerage is, is, is rock, that the bed in our condition, so I think there is subsurface, so, or subsurface activity.
Yeah, we, Georgia, we were having really trouble hearing you on this end. Marina, I will, sometimes I'm going to mute people to help try to clear it up here in the room. Sometimes I think we're getting some feedback from some other microphones, but we've got all the microphones turned off here. I don't know if we need another answer on that real quick? If we can just get a more clarification answer, it didn't come through very good on that end.
Yeah, I heard one out of two words that Georgia was saying, but essentially he said that the preliminary environmental assessment that has been done represented that the site is very clean. There's no environmental remediation that has to do. In terms of soil analysis, I didn't, we were not told, stay away from this part or this part. We don't know yet.
And if I may, if I may, Marina, this is Horace Jones, everyone. Prior to the county purchasing this property, there, there was a lot, from the, from the federal government, there was a lot of soil studies, there was a lot of environmental information on the site, a lot of information that was, that has been provided, that the county didn't look at, and, and, and that basically, because it kind of went out of purchase, something you really, that was, and so, and the federal government had many studies on this property. So, so to answer your question, basically, as Marina says, it's clean property, there are some, there are some things out there, but it's not so major that it will prevent development.
All right, thank you, Horace. All right, board members, any additional questions before we go into public input? All right, we're going to go into the public input section of the meeting. Please note, if you wish to speak on this, there, we do have to limit your time, so please make your comments concise. We're just going to go directly into it, and our first speaker is John Kellis.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kellis was here just a moment ago, and he asked if I could read this statement.
Computer, Marina.
Oh. Oh, okay. I'm not technical, but, um, as you can tell. But anyway, so he asked if I could read this short statement of his. Would that be all right? He is a member of the Beulah Coalition, and also a leader in the Nature Trail subdivision.
That's fine, I mean, we're not under judicial or anything, so I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Okay. He had to leave, so. He said, "The smartest thing the county did was to select DPZ for the master plan. The next smartest thing the county can do is to listen to them. The goals are a thousand jobs and improving quality of life for residents. Yet we keep hearing from our commissioner, we want Commerce Park and no more housing." The big issue I hear in Nature Trail is traffic, number one, and amenities, number two. And that's from Mr. Kellis. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm also speaker coming up. Thank you.
Cecilia Campbell.
Good morning, ma'am. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Cecilia Campbell. We live on the far north corner, 5965 Frank Rita Road. Our property borders the northwestern quadrant there. I am a transplant from Brent. I grew up in Brent. My family moved to Beulah in 73, and I think that if, most people know why people moved to Beulah in those days, people sold their homes all over, you know, Pensacola and the suburbs, to be able to move out to Beulah to have horses, farm. And we raised our children there, and they had to move away to pursue a career, you know, commensurate with their education. So I am very sympathetic to all these young people who've moved, moved to Beulah. I was one of those that was thinking, please don't put more subdivisions. And I have not heard any, anyone speak about the 237 houses that are going directly north of Frank Rita Road, and I have no idea how many other houses are on our little dead end road. This is a dead end road that people used to come and park in front of our house and walk their dogs. And so that, that is a concern. dogs. And so that is a concern. The transportation, on the Commerce Plan, when we zoomed in, we saw the 18-wheelers on that piece of property right around the corner from where our house is. I'm concerned about the Commerce Plan and also the Greenway Plan, putting Commerce in that corner where there's so many new subdivisions that have not been developed, you know, yet. I'm one of those that have great dream dreams for this place. As a community member, I was a choral director for many, many years, and I know that we need, something I haven't heard mentioned, we really need a big convention center. If they would put, add to one of those plans, a nice big convention center where all of our choruses and bands can come perform, they have to pay churches to go and have a concert in a church. So there are lots of big things that, I'm not anti-growth, anti-big stuff. I was one of those that, when I saw, I watched all the charrettes, and I loved the designs. In 20 years, I might want one of those smaller houses with a walkability plan. And I'm happy for people to be able to do that. I'm very concerned about the county commissioners and what they might do. And I'm sorry, but I'm very skeptical. My mother was county commissioner's secretary back in the days of Grady Albretton and Jack Kenny. And I know that the county commissioners can do what they want to do. And I get very nervous when I hear jobs, 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 property tax. I heard someone mention something about the property tax values and exemptions. I don't get an exemption for my horses. You know, I have almost eight acres there, and no, you don't get exemptions. We pay our full, I can tell you about my property taxes, and they're probably going to go up for those people who are sacrificing. They sacrificed so much by moving out to the country. And I would love for these young parents to be able to take their kids to soccer and baseball and whatever, gymnastics, ballet. I mean, we traveled all over this city, taking our children to those things. We had to leave Beulah before all the traffic, but it still took a good 30 minutes to take our places across town. They were playing ball and playing soccer on Kim Strand Road. They were playing baseball at Bellevue Ballpark. And so I know those parents are going to really appreciate being able to use that land for things we've had to sacrifice all these years to go be a part of.
Ms. Campbell, your time has expired. I don't know if you can hear the timer, but thank you. Zachary Campbell.
My name is Zachary Campbell. I live at 5965 Frank Rita Road. And if we could put up the village aerial view, I want to point a couple of things out.
You talking about this plan, the village plan, sir?
Yeah, there's an aerial view on the slide earlier.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to point out a couple of things.
Do we have a laser pointer or something, so that you could stay at the microphone?
This is being...
Sir, excuse me, you'll have to come back to the microphone. We're recording the proceeding, and it won't pick you up over there, so.
Marina, what if you, what if you move the cursor, and he can direct you to move the cursor?
Northwest corner, please.
No, northwest.
There. My property is right there, on that corner. No, where your cursor was, right across the street, 237 houses are going in. Frank Rita was my grandfather. And that land right there was terraced like so. A developer called D.L. Horton has come in there and has changed the terrain, so much so that there's a berm built around their eastern border, probably about 20 feet high, and he's cut down old growth oak trees, piled behind there, had been burning them for months, and nobody said a word about it. So whenever I hear the word optimal, I get really nervous. This guy got away with that. So my point about that would be, I have a vested interest, obviously, in that. I'm not anti-growth, but things like access. Frank Rita Road is a two-lane road now, and it's getting busier and busier. And those 237 houses are going to be put in there, it's going to be, that's going to be something to see. The walking amenities, that's what we'd like, and like my wife said, things that we have to drive to get to, we would like to see. The one thing I would like to ask a question about is the bordering businesses. Navy Federal bought 100 acres, eastern border. Do we know what they're going to do with that? And if not, it would be better, I would think, if we could maybe put most of the businesses on that side of the property. And that's about all I've got to say. Just the word optimal makes me very nervous.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Teresa Blackwell.
Good morning. Well, it's been a long three years, going from just a Commerce Park to something more for Beulah. So I'm really excited to be at this juncture. And also to get the scope of work to include the people of Beulah was another fight, which the Beulah Coalition fought for Beulah. And so, DPZ, that's the dream team they've got together. We're ridiculously fortunate to have this group planning a place in Beulah. So a dream come true. They're doing a wonderful job, just like I thought they would. Marina, from the start, when I was worried about what would happen when it gets to the commission, she said, "Trust the process." And what the process has shown us overwhelmingly is, just a Commerce Park will not work. It will not work optimally for anyone. And Mr. Wilson outlined that in an extremely excellent manner. And I appreciated that. And that's something I've known since learning about New Urbanism. It's what I've been saying all along. Though the Commerce Park was the dream of some developers over decades, it no longer works for us, and really no longer has worked for anyone for about 20 years. So roughly 40% of residents preferred the village plan, and that included 20, you know, I think it was close to 30% participation, 20-something percent participation from residents all over the county that don't live, actually in the zip code, that includes Bellevue. So, and so even the Beulah part, the way they counted it, includes Bellevue. So only half of those, of that, preferred the Commerce Plan, so only about 20%. To talk about the individual plans, I would say Greenway out. It has single use too much there, which is going to be harder to market. It's too dense for the site. I really don't like those colliding blocks structure, although I do like the Greenway parts going through the middle of it. Very nice. But I'd say we can, that one out. And I also don't like that Commerce up in the northwest, as the McDills, Campbells mentioned. And I could almost just quit after C.C. McDill Campbell spoke. But anyway, so the market, it does rate the best performance-wise, and there's a lot to recommend that plan, but it also is awfully intense. And I don't like the way they have the retail on the south end a little too far to the west. It blocks that. One of the things we love in Beulah is that long view from Nine Mile of the woods, and that kind of blocks that, because it's got that retail blocking that view. So it's a little too dense, but there are elements there that I love, that if you show the, if you could show the market plan, there's an aerial that shows like a farmy area. Another, that's it. That is pretty darn great. It's the character of Beulah. It's got a little horse ring. It's got a little plot for community garden there with maybe an activity barn, and then that's actually a school down there in the corner.
Ms. Blackwell, Mr. Holland has donated his time to you, so we're going to allow you to use the time that he's donated to you. Your first session has expired, so.
Thank you. I'm far along here. So I do like that element there very much, and that could easily be incorporated into my preference, the village plan. The village plan has, it's a beautiful plan. It's a gorgeous plan. It's one I could see in the earth design books as an example. It's one that we could market as, you know, after we win design awards. This is an award-winning place, you know, come locate here. Come build your business here. So, and so also, it scored high on all of the ratings, and it's one the people of Beulah have largely preferred. It also leaves a lot of green space around the edges, which is very nice. And so we have a buffer there, which is great. And it was great environmentally. And it could be strengthened with different elements of the market plan. I think you could beef it up with some things like, possibly add some retail. There's a large green space there, which is nice down the south end, but you could creep up that retail a little bit. You could also creep up that Commerce a little to the north, and just, you know, compromise there a little, but still keep that buffer at the north side. And also, I believe the village plan focuses too much on just farm outdoor space. The farm theme is great for Beulah, but we also need outdoor recreation of more varied types. And I think, you know, the young people would like having that, you know, things for the kids. We could have some ballparks or whatever. There's plenty of room to have other kinds of outdoor uses, and we need an outdoor arena and public buildings, a lot of public buildings. So I would like to see in the final plan, public buildings there. We need all kinds of, we need everything that a small town would take for granted there, like fire station, police station, meeting building, community center, senior center, things for seniors, all those kinds of public facilities, that post office, all of that, which I haven't seen delineated. And these things are, you know, meant to be flexible blocks, and I understand that. But I would just like to see where those kinds of things go on the plan. So that is about it, you know. It's, village is a beautiful, just a beautiful arrangement, and I think would be wonderful in Beulah. But I also like markets, so. And that is the optimum as far as money and tax and everything else. So we could combine those two. That's what I suggest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell. Christian Wagley.
Good morning. Again, Christian Wagley. I work for Healthy Gulf, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the Gulf of Mexico and all of the waterways and communities along its shores. As part of that, we closely follow development patterns in multiple counties throughout the Panhandle, and really see this as a tremendous opportunity to do something great for Escamia County. First of all, I want to thank all of you and the county staff for bringing in the very best and the brightest in the business, and for following the charrette process, which is really a great way to make sure that the community is truly involved, even with the challenges of COVID-19. Looking at the environmental issues here, clearly, the LF8 site's a site that's already largely cleared. You know, we're looking at preserving already, you know, the wetlands that are there. And really, looking at, I know, green infrastructure was mentioned, which is another thing that's certainly of interest to us, because really what happens on the land increasingly determines now the health of the waterways, where we recreate, the rivers, the streams, our bays and bayous. So green infrastructure is a huge part of that, but also really that reduced need to drive. As we've heard, that's a growing trend in America today. When we design around the automobile, we get worse outcomes for our water bodies nearby, and worse outcomes for the environment overall. And increasingly, that really connects with our economic future, because today, our economy is really driven by quality of life, quality of place, and I think you're hearing this increasingly. You know, it used to be, we opened a factory, right, and everybody moved there to take the factory job. Now, we either stay in a place, or we move somewhere, because it's a great place to live, right? And increasingly, especially for young people, it has to be a place that's walkable. It has to be a place that provides that quality of life, quality of place. I don't want to get in a car as much, and they want to avoid the traffic congestion. I think you clearly hear from the people in Beulah and throughout Escamia County, that traffic congestion is one of the biggest, most tangible issues that's driving issues and problems in this, in this community and all over the place. And part of that's because our codes really mandate a development pattern that maximizes congestion. Here we have an opportunity through the village plan, through the market plan, to really minimize congestion, to minimize the number of trips that have to go out on Nine Mile Road. Clearly, the Commerce Park plan would maximize congestion, which is the very worst thing of all for the environment, for Beulah, clearly, quality of life, the people don't want that. So I think, I'm not sure what your exact path is today, as far as your recommendations, whether it's specific plans, but I think, I hope you'll send a strong recommendation as to the quality of the work that's been done by the consultants, by DPZ and their colleagues, and that you move that forward to the commission. Maybe it's the village plan, maybe it's the market plan, but I think it's clearly not the Commerce Park plan. We've seen all the reasons why. You know, that made sense in the 70s and 80s, but it's a different age today. We have a different thing that drives the economy. We have a different thing that drives workers. And environmentally, from our organization's standpoint, we have some opportunities here to be more efficient in the way we use the land, and I think clearly the Commerce Park plan is not that. So it's a great chance to do something great for Escamia County for our future, and I appreciate all of your input and your hand in shaping that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll probably murder this name, but Paul Van Berdonk? I know you'll give me the correct pronunciation of it.
Very darn good. Van Rindt.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here just because I have, I understand that the Commerce Park, people are looking at like, all these industrial buildings and everything. I don't look at it that way. I look at a Commerce Park like, all the amenities everybody are asking for, that would fill up a pretty good chunk of this property. If you're talking a big convention center, you're talking ballparks, you're talking medical facilities, dental, tons of restaurants, retail, and everything, all that would come to 1,000 jobs. You'll make your quota that you have to have. But I don't think we need houses here. We all need to build a little nice little paradise for a handful of people, in all reality, if you want to call it that. So I do have another question. Since it's government property, are there regulations you guys have to have? Do you have to have a certain amount of low-income housing there? Do you have to have a certain amount of middle, certain amount of high? Because I think you got to be diversified here. And I haven't seen anything that says we have to have a certain percentage of any type of housing on here. So if that's not, and if, how do you determine how much these lots are going for? The average area in Beulah right now, I'm just throwing a rough guess here, say 2,200 square foot home, is going for about $220,000, it's about $100 square foot. Is that what we're looking to sell this property for, $100 a square foot? That might even be on a low figure. So I haven't seen a single estimate of what we're looking at per acre, per square foot, and what these houses are going for, if you're going to go that route. Let's see, right now, you guys got to understand, we are well overbuilt in houses in Beulah. I have a 13-year-old house that I was looking to sell. I couldn't even sell the darn thing. They kept telling me it's an old house compared to all these subdivisions out in Beulah right now. And they are not interested in even buying a house that's 13 years old, because there's so many to choose from, and there's so many that are still being developed. I just don't see a logic in building more houses on this property. And they can be well utilized, and even if you didn't fill the thing up now, for the future residents there and people coming, I think there's, what land you didn't use, is going to have, and there's going to be a future that, we need that piece of land for this company or whatever, you know, or this type of event that we want to have. So I just think this housing has got bad news written all over it. Let's see, is there going to be an HOA on this land? Who's going to control the way that land is, if you've had houses there? Is there going to be an HOA? Who's going to control the way this housing being maintained? It's government property. I mean, once you sell it, is it no longer government property? Because they were living on government property, so I think there's going to be regulations for that, too. Haven't heard anything about that. Let's see. I just don't think Beulah and the government needs to be in the real estate business, to be honest with you. Let's see. I thought I heard somebody about, say something about a survey on how many actually want houses, but I've seen numerous Beulah posts and internet. I can't find anybody that really wants it, other than a handful of people. I can't, every time I look, they're basically saying, "No housing, no housing, no housing," when somebody asks about it. So it's just one of my opinions.
All right, sir. Thank you. Your time has expired. So thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Scott Luth? Scott Luth?
Sir, appreciate the opportunity to come and visit in front of y'all, kind of give us our thoughts. Again, Scott Luth with Florida West Economic Development Alliance. One thing I wanted to start with, or start with actually, is because, you know, a lot of times in front of these presentations that we get from DPC and others, there's no past history given. Just to remind this board, you know, when this project was actually originally concepted, the efforts were gone through between working with the Navy, as basically a Navy protection project with Whiting Field. The other component, which was a secondary component, was to actually have interstate frontage for job creation, not necessarily a Commerce Park, but basically focused on job creation for the community, were the two primary principles of why this project started. The county, again, is not the private sector. It wasn't acquired basically to build, you know, to basically look at this thing from a private sector development perspective. It was looked at from a public purpose. And so just kind of ask you all to just kind of keep that in mind. Some of the things that, as I followed the process with DPC, I guess until recently, there was no economic impact analysis done. The definition of success was either sell the property or taxes, which again, when we look at things, we look at what is the overall economic impact to a project. To my knowledge, none of that's been reported out. Also, some of the things that we looked at is the review of the surrounding property. You know, we did ask, you know, have you looked at, you know, what is the surrounding use? How many housing developments are going up? What is the other potential use all throughout the county for similar things that we're proposing here? I've not really seen that assessment, if it exists, you know, they primarily are focusing just on this particular piece of property. The other thing that we're wondering about is, you know, was there a review of national job creations and where those projects could have gone if we actually had interstate project, interstate frontage here? I've not seen that report either, something that we've been kind of concerned about, we've been asking for. So how many projects have gone to other states or the locations, because we didn't have a place for them? One of the things that misinformation that kind of keeps going out there is all of our existing Commerce Parks. Currently, to date, available property, we only have a couple 10-acre lots left and maybe one or two 20-acre lots left, in all of our formal industrial parks and Commerce Parks in the county. That information has been provided, but we talk about all these thousands of acres of undeveloped industrial property, it doesn't exist. We've got property that we're working with, we've got partners that we're trying to market, but as far as actually available property ready for sale, there's really nothing over 20 acres. So just kind of keep that in mind as you all make those decisions. So again, we're not saying it's gotta be a full Commerce Park, but we do want to make sure that there's a focus on job creation. And we also keep hearing about the, basically the maximum of 1,000 jobs. Yet really, from our perspective, that ought to be the minimum. You know, what are we doing to develop a piece of property that's gonna generate well over 1,000 jobs, not just 1,000 jobs minimum, and define that as success? So it's just some perspectives we'd like you all to kind of take into consideration as you all are looking at long-term planning and zoning for this property. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Luth, I'm just curious. I've heard the term "high-paying job" in relationship to those 1,000 jobs.
Correct.
What would be your definition of a high-paying job or the right kind of salaries for that area?
Sure. Yeah, when we define high-paying jobs, that's related to qualified most, for most of the state, you know, programs, actually most of the Triumph money, you know, we're looking somewhere well above $56,000 to $60,000 a year at a minimum. And so those would be any targets that we'd be looking at as well, is how can we make sure that we're bringing in at least, that'd be, again, it's kind of like the 1,000 jobs. That would be the minimum salary we'd want to consider as an average across the board, you know, for the type of jobs that we'd like to bring into, any, really bring into Escanbey County as a whole.
Not to put you on the spot, but have you, have you done any contact work to get an idea about how easy it would be to market?
Market the, I mean, I'm not calling it a question.
As a Commerce Park, to put, to put jobs on the site.
Sure. Yeah, and again, that's, and that's part of the challenge that, you know, that we've, you know, trying to work with, with DPC and having those, asking those same questions is, you know, unfortunately with what we do, we never know when the next Navy Federal Credit Union is gonna come knocking on the door. You know, I can look at past history, I can look at what the, you know, what the last announcements were across the United States and say, okay, well, you know, maybe, you know, could have that project gone here, those types of things. We'd have some of that market analysis, but to tell you when those projects are gonna come is very difficult. What I can tell you is, is without a site, they'll never come.
So in other words, terms like shovel-ready and things like that are important. You gotta be able to have the facilities, the, the infrastructure and things like that, readily accessible, transportation access, before you can really market it.
Correct. And the other challenge that we have here, as we all know, Escanbey County is a very narrow county, and the available acreage close to the interstate is basically next to nothing. It's all been developed. Or it's selling for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars an acre, not competitively priced property for $30,000 and $40,000 an acre. So that's one of the challenges that we have. And so that's again, while we're not advocating for the entire thing to be Commerce Park, we just want to make sure that enough of the property is set aside for that. And some of the other concepts that we're seeing, unless they're truly flexible, are not providing the amount of acreage that I think this county's gonna want to have over the next 30 years.
Yeah, that was my next question. I was, I was gonna ask, is there anything comparable that's gonna have that access to the interstate? Even possible?
Not in Escanbey County. Our competitive counties to the east and west have interstate frontage property or close to interstate frontage property. Currently, we do not. Thank you.
Mr. Ingwell?
Sir, I have a question for you.
Of course.
You'd mentioned there's a discrepancy in the Commerce Park available acres. We've heard that 1,000 acres is available, and you're claiming substantially less than that, 10 and 20-acre lots. Are you referring, are these, are we referring to idle Commerce Park property or?
Yeah, if you look at Marcus Point, Century Industrial Park, you're looking at the Midtown Commerce Park, the only one that, that we've been working on, which is called the Bluffs, which are owned by ECUA and Ascend, we're still working through those. Those are not formally for sale or available. You know, while we try to market them, we try to have conversations, they're not formally, they're not formally ready to go pieces of property. Now, like with this one, they're not either, but they're also, each one of those different parks, though, are for a specific type of industry. Obviously, the Bluffs, you have Ascend Manufacturing, you have International Paper up in there, you have, you know, our ECUA wastewater treatment facility. Great opportunity for development, but you know, that's, there're gonna be a lot of companies that go there, you know. So it just kind of really depends on the type of park and what we have. Marcus Point, looking at that, I think the largest tract I have there that's not encumbered by wetland or right-of-way easement is around six acres. And that's all that's left in that park that you could actually develop.
So the rest, so the rest of that development is, is producing? It's actually being used? It's not sitting idle?
Correct. Yeah, it's, yeah, or it's vacant for sale property, is what it is. Ellison Industrial Park, just to give you an example. There's undeveloped property out there, but it's privately held by those companies for their future expansion. They don't want to be landlocked. And so when you drive around, it may look like there's acreage that's not being used, but it's being reserved for the companies that currently are there, which is the same thing. I would hate to go in, you know, again, you take that property, put somebody else on it, and then that company wants to expand, and they can no longer expand or stay in our community, because they don't have the potential for growth. And so we run into some of that as well, when you dig deeper a little bit into our assessment of what's actually available in the county. It's actually publicly owned in the county, so let me say that, too, because we've got some private property, but again, that's private property that may or may not be for sale for this purpose.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I have a little time left. Could I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
FDOT has as a place marker for that interchange in Beulah 10 years from now. And one thing I haven't heard mentioned is, there are large swaths just north of I-10. There will be an interchange there, and there is, there are large swaths set aside there for industrial commerce. So we're not the only game in town, OLF-8, for the future of commerce, so I don't want that to stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell. Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak that hasn't spoken already? All right, we will hereby close the public comment portion of the hearing and go back to our TPC staff. There was a couple of questions raised. I don't know if you want to try to address any of those now, but we'll turn it back over to you for some closing statements.
Thank you. I'm trying to see what the questions, where I wrote some things down.
I think there was a gentleman that had a question about the homeowners' association. I'm assuming that that would be covered under the master plan and the statutes put in place according to zoning for the county, I believe was one of his questions.
Yes, correct. I mean, a lot of the open, open spaces would be provided, would be paid for by the HOAs, for sure. In terms of one, Ms., Paul V., I'm sorry, I didn't get his last name, asked about what were the government obligations in terms of housing. That's for the commissioners to decide. We were not told that there are specific obligations at this stage, but given the amount of housing that could be accommodated here, it's not unreasonable to expect that some of the county's goals, some of the county's goals for housing could be accommodated here as well. There's certain, certainly opportunities for that. In terms of Scott Luth's comments, the, the, yes, the scope did not call for an economic impact analysis. We are using some, some of our fees to run a, to ask, as we asked the House Center to do a quick analysis for us, but that wasn't part of our, our direct, our direct mandate. In terms of the confusion about the amount of land available for industrial use, Scott seen, has seen our numbers, we've seen his numbers, I'm surprised that there's only 10 and 20-acre parcels, but I could pull up the slide that shows our assessment of it in terms of the, and it was thousands of acres. I'm not saying Scott is incorrect, but there's, then there's a disconnect between what the county is telling us is available and what Scott thinks is available. And Teresa Blackwell was actually correct when she said that the district structure plan north of I-10 has reserved an enormous amount of land for a potential employment district as well, in the DSP that's immediately to the north. I'm trying to see, there are other questions. Teresa's comments in terms of the kind of, what she'd like and, and would like to see in terms of the plans mixed, we would ask her to please email us those comments or maybe provide them to John. In fact, both the comments by John and Teresa we would like to have. Christian Wagley's comments as well, too, are well taken.
Marina, there was a question from one of the Campbells about retail adjacent to Navy Federal or the Navy Federal property on the southeast side of the?
What was the specific question about the retail?
Would that make a option, a likely option for some retail and/or commerce adjacent to the Navy Federal parcel?
Yes, yeah, that's certainly possible to incorporate if that's, if that's wanted. I don't know if any of the, any of the other DPC consultants have anything else to add or heard something that I may not have directly addressed. I see Joe seems to want to talk.
Marina, could you put up the market plan, so that's on the screen? Somebody's phone is going off. So what you see here in the, in the grid structure, and I want to, I'm gonna go back to, you know, this is related to what Peter was talking about, also the approach to design on this, on this site, is that none of us have a crystal ball into the future, but we have data that we can look at on the current market trends and what's going on, and that's what this plan reflects. And the size of the parcels, particularly those on the commercial side, on the east side of the design, are showing boxes that could or couldn't be there in the future, but there's an adaptability to the site, and it's actually a tremendously large amount of real estate dedicated to that future use. Additionally, as part of the whole design process, there's always been conversation that should a project show up that needs more space, there's adaptability built into the design for these parcels to shift. So should a large commercial project and all this stuff is already accounted for, need more real estate, because of the grid structure of the design, there's an adaptability to it. And that, that needs, it sounds like that needs to be stressed a little bit more, given some of the comments. As far as the, the, the HOA, your state enabling legislation actually suggests a tax district, which is what we would recommend for the site, for the amenities on the site. So basically, create a separate taxation district in this area, in this boundary to account for the infrastructure that those individuals take on that are greater than and higher than anything else that's within the county. And actually, that's, your state recommends that you go down that route. From a standpoint of impact fees, that wasn't part of our scope, but we've done this before. And a really simple way to look at it is that when a use isn't on this property and it's somewhere else, there's gonna be a connection between that job and that resident. So once that resident leaves their house and drives onto the system, that becomes an externalized cost into the system. So you could just actually look at it from this site, the, I'll just take the, the residential subdivisions that are on the upper left outside of the OLF-8 site, there are people that live there. So the first question to ask yourself is, how do they get their water? Where do they get their, their job? And once it goes into the system, it becomes externalized cost, and running those numbers of single-family residential detached dwelling, the way that the Florida tax system is set up, it's apparently subsidized, because, you know, residential is capped from a tax standpoint, and it, and it isn't commensurate with the overall costs of the residential unit. Once you detach it from its job and it becomes part of it, you drive on road, basically. So we could run those numbers if you'd like, but we've just seen in other places where we have run those numbers, that the cities and counties generally depend on commercial product to carry the cost of residential housing.
I'd like to just add a couple of brief comments, which is that I think there was some confusion maybe in what Scott Luth had described as being a maximum of 1,000 jobs being contemplated in all of the plans. In fact, it's a, it's a minimum, I think, he spoke here. Certainly, we've, we've had a really great collaboration with Scott throughout this process, so I think that was just a misstatement. All of these plans accommodate a base minimum of 1,000 jobs, and in fact, many of them can accommodate several thousand jobs, just simply as shown in the plan. And again, coming back to what we just described again, we have these expansion zones. There's, you know, given the timeframe that would likely be required to build out any of these schemes, we're talking about 15 to 20 years. So it's likely that, that Florida West or the county would have more than a decade of time to go out and market this site and industrial or employment or commerce or office components to this site, to those types of employers of choice, before we'd start encroaching upon land that, that would, that could be used for other uses. And so this entire development can be phased so that, so that those areas of job creation can be protected for more than a decade, in fact, probably closer to 20 years, before there's ever a risk of us running out of land. So, you know, the, one of the key objectives for all of these plans is to allow for the county and for Florida West really have a good, strong shot at marketing this vision, whatever the vision ends up being. This is not necessarily one of these four plans, but the key here is really for the county to have the best possible shot to market this location as, as a location for employers of choice, to expand within the county, to come to the county for the first time and, and make a employment base here. And so there's likely to be more than 10 years of time for the county to try to achieve that goal. In the interim, starting in about 18 months, construction jobs can start on the site, building the infrastructure, building house, building detail, and none of that has to stop to still preserve the job creation aspect of its property.
And thank you, Peter and Joe, and I have one more thing I wanted to add, which is, I can't, it may have been Scott who said this, I don't remember, but we said we didn't look at property outside of the site. We did, the county provided us with all of the development permits they have of projects under, either under construction or under permit review. So we did an assessment of all of those plans to understand what is currently coming into the Beulah community right now, and it's, it's a crazy amount of housing. Some commerce is coming in now, some attempts also to mix use with things with projects like Project 52. So we do have a good understanding of what's happening here. And... And we also took the long view out, which is to say, the 1,900 units that Peter's study has told us is in the pipeline for Beulah over the next 20 years. If it doesn't go on this site, where does it go? What you wouldn't want to see happen is the rest of Beulah, the rural communities, just broken down into these housing subdivisions, one after the other, the D.R. Hortons, which are, which is exactly not what we're trying to do here. So, the ones that ignore topography and that tear down trees is not what this, this project is about at all. That's not what you want to see happen. So, you have to think about, if you want your quote unquote downtown, if you want a significant amount of commerce here, it really needs to be accommodated with some residential. And, and as I mentioned before, it's trying to find the right balance. So, if you think that 72 acres, for example, is not enough for commerce, ask for more, but let that sunset at a certain point. If that, if those tenants aren't found so that the site could be further developed, those are the kinds of questions I think we should, that could be a win-win for everybody so that you don't reserve more land than you need for commerce or less land than you need for commerce. We're concerned about both. But you also, but we're also thinking about the greater Beulah community and the potential that this site has to absorb, given the fact that Navy Federal is right there and that a significant commercial component is coming in here as well, or commerce component is coming here as well. Why not make it as, as a sustainable neighborhood as possible?
Marina, a quick question for you. I just wanted to make sure that this was clear, that the public understood. As of right now, the county owns the parcel, and what do we anticipate the plan to be as far as the actual development of the property? Is that, do we think it's going to be the county to develop it, or is it going to be sold to individual developers who will then take their portion of, of the project and develop? I don't think that's been really clearly stated. There were some questions about how the county would control this, and so maybe we need to get that on the record.
So, if it's, if, for example, Triumph funds are sought and, and secured, then the county has to own the land on which the, the infrastructure is put in, that comes out of the Triumph fund, funding that comes along. So, for the Commerce Park, for example, the short answer is it's a combination of the two, because for the Commerce Park, the county, if they were to secure, Triumph Funds would need to retain ownership of the land. For the residential, if they, if they were to choose to move forward with one of the plans that has a residential component, they would sell this off to different developers. And our challenge is going to be to write the zoning for whichever plan is selected that sets the framework into place that's necessary to ensure that the goals of each plan are retained and the, and the, and the characteristics of each plan are retained, but are not so prescribed that there's no wiggle room for the developers 10 years from now to come and have to change things if they need to. So, that's why I think the modularity of this is important, the, the potential, as Peter said, expansion of these blocks to other uses is important while still retaining the characteristics that make each plan unique to theirs. Peter, did you want to say something else?
Only that, you know, the, the county is likely to, it's likely to be in the county's interest to maintain a very active role throughout the entire development of this process, to orchestrate it for maximum return to the taxpayers, to develop partnerships with private sector developers, to sell land to private, private sector developers in an orderly fashion so that this doesn't happen haphazardly. We can put the plan in place and the zoning in place, and all of the regulations can be there. But then if, you know, the entire development site were to sold, to be sold off to one developer or a couple of developers, then I think that we would end up, the county would end up losing its place at the table to some degree. As long as the county maintains a position of economic control over the portion of the site and moves it forward with a heavy hand, I think that, that may result in the best outcome for everybody, including for the developers that are acquiring parcels within which to develop any given use.
Thank you. At this time, I wanted to recognize Ms. Patty Hightower from our school board. I think she has a statement. We were planning on having some interaction from the school board today, but the individuals got called away. So, Ms. Hightower?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it is on. I did want to comment, first of all, thank you to APC for putting a school in each of the plans, because as many of the citizens have referenced, we know that the population is growing out there. And no matter what plan goes forward, we feel like there will be an opportunity for a school to be placed in that area. I would like to comment, though, that as I look at their plans, the school board and the superintendent are going to respectfully ask for a bit more land. State here has a little more structure, a little more specificity. If we were to put a K-8 schools there, it would need about 25 acres of land. I did want to say Dr. Tim Smith was on the, was monitoring the meeting early, as was our assistant superintendent for operations. So, they, you know, I will make sure that we put something in writing to send to the team along those lines. But I do appreciate the fact that we have been included. I think I asked early on that we look at putting a school there. So, I think that, oh, and I did want to ask, you know, somebody was talking about they needed a place for bands and chorus, et cetera. The district's plan at this point is we're going to have, you know, Washington High School has a fine arts auditorium. We are, we have in our plans, our 5, 10, 20-year plan, we are going to have an auditorium at every one of the high schools. So, there's, one of the Scambia is going to be kind of across the street, but they're, those are in the plans, and we will get to them. Thank you to the citizens for our half-cent sales tax. That's what we use to be able to make, make those things available.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
Mr. Chairman, I just kind of want to maybe have a conversation with Ms. Hightower on a school on this property. You know, I look at, if we put a lot of residents here, we've got folks working here, there's obviously a need for a school. I'm no expert in how much, how many acres you would need for that school. And, and so I see again, as I sit here representing District 3, we're talking about another school being built, not in the community in which I serve. We're talking about a district that does not have a middle school. And, and so, my, my hope would be is that we could maybe in some way with this school get creative, or at least be open to the ideas of doing something creative here. I love the suggestion of kindergarten through eighth grade school. I think I would also like to see either a portion of that school be, have a magnet program in there to where we, like we see at MB Cook or at Brown Barge or at West Florida, where students from all over the county have the opportunity to attend this school so that, again, the students in, in District 3 aren't getting left out again with a nice new school that's going in. And I know we, we have had some new schools, like Global Learning Academy go in. But again, with the removal of the middle school that was there, there, there are no longer any middle schools in the area. And I know that's a huge concern to that population, and I know that you might disagree with me there, but within the footprint of District 3, there is no middle school currently. And so, I just think that would be maybe one way to look at, at doing this, if you had a public kindergarten through fifth grade and the sixth through eighth is a magnet school or a lottery system to include everybody. But just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. As you know, Escambia County is a choice district as we stand now, which in some ways complicates knowing what the enrollment will be at any one of our schools. Because people can, we have the open enrollment part, people from Century can go to Pensacola High School. The caveat is transportation, of course. And I think that we, as the board, when we started talking about the OLF opportunity, I threw out the K-8 model. I'm seeing K-8s being built around the state and the country. They present their own set of complications. But I also wanted to make sure that the community understands that all of our middle schools have career academies in them, and students and parents can opt to go to any middle school based on what academy they'd like to attend. So, you know, I, and Brown Barge is in District 3, but okay, anyway.
But if I live in District 3, I can't just go there because I live in the neighborhood.
I know, I know, I know, I, I, I know. But, you know, I think that we're going to start looking also, as we've seen more and more infill in the downtown area, that we're going to have to start looking again at where our, our, our schools need to be located. We have this discussion, I know Mr. Adams brought to the board all of the developments that are happening in Beulah as far as, as housing being built. And that's when we started thinking that we were going to possibly need to have some more schools in the area. But that complication is when we don't know, because we don't know what commerce will be brought in, are we going to be like what happened where people are moving from Brent to Beulah? And yet, so we won't have those people in the other areas, which, you know, back when I first got on the school board, we had a, an amazing amount of downsizing in school closures, because the state requires that if you have capacity anywhere, you can't use state funds to build. So, we had to right-size our district for the student population that we had at that point. Unfortunately, most of our students were in a different location than where our buildings were. And so, that was part of that process, and that's a continuous process, having to, to look at all of the sectors, find out where the students are. But we also have, have been very aware that we want to offer choices to our parents because, and this is Patty Hightower speaking, we have not discussed this at the board. So, this board member was, when we were talking at our meeting, I was thinking about the fact that it would, the proximity to Navy Federal could lend itself to some different and some exciting things that could happen at that school. With the, the people who work there could bring their children to that school, but there could be, you know, a lot of academies that could be in, put at that school. So, I mean, those are things that, you know, as, as we all know, this is not going to happen tomorrow, but we do know that we want to be proactive and have space available when we need to have that space. Did that answer your questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. We appreciate your input. Okay, at this point, is there anything else? Marina, Terry, Travis, any of you have anything else you would like to add?
Mr. Chairman, John Fisher, I just, well, there was two other questions I could probably briefly just answer real quick.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions was Navy and Federal was intent. When they did the future land use change and stuff like that, one of the major attempts was, when they did the 100 acres, was to also preserve their, that forest area there. That's why, you know, they wanted, was to preserve their property as well, is why they purchased so much. The other was also, if you look at on your screen, the Commerce Plan and the Market Plan, you see down there parking lot area, that was part of, helped with the Triumph Fund to add 300 more jobs by having these parking spaces there would bring in the 300 more additional jobs in Navy Federal. They don't need to build any more buildings, they just need the parking spaces. That has just been a pre-application at this point. COVID hit, they haven't moved any further, I think they want to see what happens with OLF-8 plan, whether they want to move forward or not. So, that's where Navy, you know, what the county and Navy Federal have submitted to each, you know, has been in turn talked about. The other question was about Frank Reeder Road being a dead-end road. Their county has been looking into the connection to Divine Farms Road on the other side. We do have Christine Fanchi here, she, with the TTO, County Engineer, Engineer for Transportation. She can speak a little bit more on Frank Reeder Road and the interchange, if you want to get a quick little update on that. I do know during these plans that we have gone through, each one of the plans in the north, for Frank Reeder section of OLF-8, they have actually took a little swath of right-of-way out already of the plan for, we contend that we have that right-of-way expansion already for the OLF-8 section. It is county property, obviously, if we need to expand the road, that part would already be there.
I think while we're here, we might as well hear from, good morning. Nothing like getting put on the spot, right?
Good morning, I'm Christine Fanchi, I'm your county transportation engineer. And what an opportunity we have with this project, so excited to be part of the team. Just in general, if I could speak for one minute, number one was create high-paying 1,000 jobs. Number one concern was don't create more traffic problems on Nine Mile, right? So, I think, obviously, in, in my professional view, the, when I think about, when I came out of engineering school, I wanted to be a high-paying job, right? I grew up here, and I moved to downtown Phoenix, Arizona, so I could live, work, play in downtown. And so, this is so exciting because we could create that for the folks that right now commute from downtown Pensacola to Navy Federal. They could live right there, they could have the public uses, they could have all those things right there, and they wouldn't be commuting, and therefore, we could take trips off Nine Mile, like immediately. Addition, the new trip, basically, live there, we could have, post more people. So, and far as transportation, the mixes of uses just totally makes sense. And it really helps balance the, the need and create space for everyone, but reduce trips, which is the huge concern of the public. As far as transportation network, the, the layout of all the plans is amazing because it creates a spread of trips, right? So, there's a really nice network, and it's going to create that and give people different outlets. Frank Reeder is a main artery, right, that's going to benefit or be needed to be improved as part of this. But our process for engineering and transportation is, obviously, first we do the plan, and this, this is where we are right now. Then from there, we see what is the demand? If we want to go, let's say if we want to go with the village plan, what is the, the demand of that, and how are we going to grow? And then come up with a phased approach for Frank Reeder and Beulah and Nine Mile and all the internal streets, and make sure that that's connected. So, from this plan, we'll be able to basically do the next step, which is like a preliminary engineering design to understand what it would, what Frank Reeder would look like and what that would cost and how we would program that. The TI, to get, excuse me, traffic interchange at Beulah, as well as the traffic, well, an underpass at Frank Reeder Road to Divine Farms Road. Those will obviously be discussions with the state. We've got programs, but we first have to do the plan. And then we move into engineering and get kind of what is the need right-of-way and money, basically. And then from there, we pitch that to the opportunities that we have with the state or with grants and things like that. So, we'll move through that. So, this is obviously where we start, we're looking into it. We have some other opportunities within District 1 with Commissioner Bergash, where we're trying to balance this project into those existing funds. So, if we can get through this part, then we can move into those next steps. If there's anything else?
Do we anticipate the addition of traffic lights on Nine Mile Road at one or more of these entrances?
So, I'd have to relay back to Nelson Nygaard, who did that analysis, a really detailed analysis for this. But the hope is that, obviously, we spread and we wouldn't need additional, but I can't speak to the exact, if that makes sense. And then we'd also look at the spacing to make sure, you know, we, at Transportation and Traffic Ops, we do all the signal maintenance for the state and the county upstairs. And so, we'll basically make sure that those lights are timed, of course, Nine Mile's under construction, so it's first to do right when it finishes, so we can get basically the most efficiency out of the existing system that we can get. And we'll work on timing any lights that go in, and we'll work towards that. So, I don't know if they want to add to that.
Thank you. I see Ms. Font has lit up there, so go ahead.
Thanks, Christine. I think Christine did a great summary of the, where we are in the next steps. In terms of traffic lights, we try to space entry/exit based on the guide, the guidance of Florida DOT. But what's, what will need to happen for sure, especially, well, any of the adjacent roads, so there, there will have to be signalized crossing for pedestrians, right? So, you mentioned there are several residential subdivisions adjacent to the side, north, south, west. So, people, if we really want to capture some of these walking trips, there, there will need to be safe crossings. So, that's one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing someone mentioned from the. The other thing, someone mentioned from the public that we hadn't mentioned all the new residential units. So yes, as Marina said, we looked at, at all the developments that had already been approved, and there's going to be 2,000 residential units in the vicinity of this plan, which, and these units, these subdivisions, they don't have, there's only residential, so any, and this, we have to think of 2,000 residential units that will be converted into trips, and all of them will be auto trips, because they, most of these subdivisions don't even have sidewalk unless they're planned differently. So we really see, it's really important that there's facilities, there's things in this plan that we're, in this site, that they can either, they can attract these trips that maybe they would go farther, but they, the ones that live adjacent, they might be able to walk there, the ones that are a bit further, they might be able to drive to this site instead of converting that into long trips along, along Nine Mile Road. So that's what, the only thing I wanted to add. But we looked at, so all the new trips here will be competing with these new trips from other subdivisions, but any chance to capture these new trips to this site and preferably, well, if they can be converted into walking and biking instead of auto trips.
Thank you. Okay, Marina?
Can I add? Yeah, just, just, I think if, if I were to wrap this up, you know, the one thing I would say is you have four distinct plans here, three that show a, what we would define as a healthy mix of use, uses for a site this large. Keep in mind that because it is so large, because we're taking such a long view out and because we were intending to zone this with this modular system of blocks, typologies, if we were recommending a strategy to move forward, it would really be picking the plan that is in line with what the county residents want, reserving a certain amount of land for industry to come here so that if there is more than the 72 acres, and you know, these plans alternate from 70 at the lowest to 240 at the highest, or, and obviously, the commerce plan has more than that, reserving a certain amount for the commerce uses that they only want to come here if, once the interchange is there. But looking to develop this as, as, as productively and as economically viable as possible, which is really, you know, trying to align to what the marketability study told us, which I think could really be a win for, for the county from a financial standpoint. It can be a win for the residents who will get the amenities that they want and the, their, their small downtown that they want, and certainly a, an amenity for, for those employers who may want to come and locate here, knowing that they will have a slew of amenities to, to provide to their future workers.
All right. Thank you very much. Board members, any other questions? Okay, John, anything else from the county at this point?
So I can let Terry jump in on this. You know, the next process is, we're going to obviously committee the whole tomorrow. How that goes with committee of the whole, the plan is to bring this back in January for a recommendation of what plan the Planning Board seeks to the Board of County Commissioners for BCC in January.
Okay.
And I'll just echo that. That's our next step is January. We'll still develop the plans, but I do want to, to remind everyone, these plans are not set in stone, they are flexible, and so we can make changes. So if, if there's things that people are wanting or see that commissioners want to combine, that's still an option that we still can do. So just keep that in mind that these are flexible. And I want to thank everyone for coming out and participating and giving us their feedbacks, very helpful to the team, to hear comments and that we can continue to use those comments to develop this plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, anything else that you'd like to add?
Real quick, if, if tomorrow the committee of the whole in January, the idea is that it comes back to us to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, would it be wise or is it possible? And Marina, you're probably rolling your eyes at this one, but I think a lot of people, maybe I'm dreaming, but the thought of a somewhat of a marriage between the market and the village plan seemed to be, I don't know if that's a dream or if you can somehow combine the hybrid to be another hybrid. Instead, and the reason I do this is administratively, because in January, that's very cumbersome to try to come up with that on the fly and not be here for six hours. So just keep that in mind.
Well, I, I don't know if I can speak or not.
Go ahead, Marina.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I think the, if you were to ask us, the logical solution would be to drop the Greenway Plan since it's the least favorite and doesn't do anything that the others don't do, to maybe reserve slightly more land potentially as a hold for commerce if they so choose, even though keeping in mind that 72 acres is more than enough for 2,000 jobs, let's say. But that'll go to the commission to decide. And I think marrying the market and the village makes a lot of sense because they're very similar in many respects. So it's a good suggestion. I'm not rolling my eyes.
If I can comment on that, I think what I'm sensing here from this, what I sense from the public today is the concern of the next step, the marketability of it and the actual execution of commencing the development. And when you get into hybridizing our, our two top-shelf plans, it's almost as if that may happen naturally, geographically on the site, once the development starts. Potentially, if we could focus on guiding principles that would naturally lend themselves to the hybridization of those two plans to submit to the county as their non-negotiables as they walk through the concerns of the public. How much land is the county going to retain? How much is going to go to the private sector ownership? All of the transportation things, if, if they just set up a rulebook, if you will, based on the two winning, the market and the village, so that it naturally plays out itself among the stakeholders, the buyers, the developers, the citizens, things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Fears. Anyone else on the board? All right. Well, at this time, we're going to go ahead and close the hearing on OLF eight. Thank you again to everyone who presented and all the input from the public. We'll wait to see how it goes tomorrow with the committee of the whole, and we'll be back here in January. We do have one other agenda item, public forum. Is there anything that we need to bring forth on public forum for today? Okay, hearing done, then we are adjourned. Thank you.